We'll call the ruling to order, we're going by this clock. Would everyone please stand still and face the flag as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the resounding justice for all.
I said the pledge was going, then I said the pledge for the national paper.
No one took an in, that's a good thing. Okay, having no additions or changes, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob, other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. We will skip the scheduled presenter until...
They were at another school, so...
He comes.
It's gonna be late.
This is not our report month, so we have reports in communications, we have attachments, I believe, plus a handout by Mr. Winchell. Does anyone like to expound on what they sent in to us at all? Does anybody like to add anything? Okay, moving on. Public input. If anyone has anything that they wish to speak about, about school board, school issues, here's your forum. Okay, moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report. No Josh, Beth?
There's no Josh tonight, but I can certainly answer any questions that you might have. As you can see from your sheet, I'm not sure which one he gave you. If you have any specific questions to pull out, I can do that.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Consent agenda items. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. You had a chance to look? If not, just take a minute to look. If you have any questions, shoot them out.
Our vote, 49597, just come, grounds one landscape. Was that for Anderson Services?
Yes. Give me the number, I can tell you exactly what it is.
49597, it's under repair.
Actually, that was some work on the sprinkler system throughout the district. There's some sprinkler systems that they put the efficiency heads on, and that is what that is for.
Okay. 49565, intermediate district 287, it's a reimbursement, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's a special education. Any intermediate district you see is something where the student is going there full-time to their district, and so those checks and balances are in the year too. Any intermediate district always means special education.
On transportation, are we paying the mechanic outside of the contract? I see on...
It's in the contract, but we pay him each month. You still need to see how much it costs you each month, but it is in the contract.
Okay.
He can't earn things like overtime or anything like that, because it's not in the contract, but it's still important that you approve that every month. Great question.
I see that we renewed our insurance handover. How often do we get in the rotation for that? Every three years?
We do. Keep in mind that we've been with Riverside, Riverwood, Riverport. We've been with them for a very long time, they've served us really well. They've gotten out of doing schools in general. So this was a great opportunity for us to really go out there and see what is out there. We'll do that again every three years. But yeah, that doesn't say anything against the company we were with, they were wonderful, they just are not in the school business anymore.
And then 49653, esports and servicing, looks like our tennis courts, we're down for 16...
Tennis courts, and then some of the stuff behind the elementary as well.
Nice opportunity to go up there and take a look at those courts, they are sweet.
Yeah. And just on that note, and it's not part of this, but really, really a special thanks to the tennis team. They not only kept their word, they went above and beyond. And we still have one left with the VFW, they'll get around to that, but we've made their goal plus, and I think that's really hats off to them, they kept their word, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda, to approve the consent agenda.
I'm abstaining.
What's that?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes by the 5-0 vote with Rob abstaining. Okay, we have no old business, under new business, resolution providing for the sale of general obligation, is this out of sequence?
It is, you're gonna have to wait, the presenters are faced off of this, and so we'll wait for them to get here. I certainly think you're going to enjoy hearing what they have to say tonight, even better news than it was for the last time we refunded. So this will be very exciting for you to see, but we'll wait till Greg gets here for mailers.
Okay, we'll just move down and continue on till we get them. Consideration to approve the 17 to 20 athletic trainer services agreement. Who does that belong to?
I think it belongs to Jake, nothing's changed.
Yeah, to continue our service with Mayo and our trainer. As you can see, it's a three-year contract with an increase each year. If you have any questions, you know, I think we're ahead of the curve for a long time, and I think most schools have exactly what we have now, where they have trainer services at most contests, especially with all the concussion stuff. Last Friday night, we had a heat issue with one of our athletes, and it's really nice to have someone on the sidelines, at least a trainer, if not a doctor too, so.
Has accessibility been the same, Jake, at the sports representation? That's been about the same, been all good?
As far as...
That they're available at the sporting events and in school?
You know, she's had a lot of things, you know, when we added soccer, it took away from volleyball a little bit, so I think her kind of, her priority list is football and then soccer second, and if neither of them are playing, she'll get to volleyball.
Do you hear just as much still in general?
Oh yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the athletic trainer services. Motion by Kurt.
Oh, I think they're locked out.
Seconded by Rob.
It was open.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. The board always bothers me. Consideration to approve Schoology as our learning management system.
You remember when we first introduced this, that learning management system was so important? Now we've got everyone using it, parents, teachers, everything. It is basically the main learning management system that we use for the whole district, so the motivation would be to continue to move forward with Schoology. And both the principals are here, if you have any questions for them specifically, but it has worked really, really well.
Were we on a separate one before, or a combination of two, and we decided to go to Schoology then?
Where's Schoology? You might be thinking Infinite Campus. Is that what you're still thinking of?
Well, is it Moology or...
No, we're not using that.
Was that one that we used to get?
That was one, and I don't think we ever...
We never got off the ground.
So we're no longer with Infinite Campus?
We are, you need...
That's different.
Management, yeah. Instead of JMC, is the old, but now we've switched over to Infinite Campus.
So that one basically manages, like, the class schedules, is that...
Yeah.
Bus routes.
Infinite Campus is a student information system, so it's all the stuff about kids, that's where all of the state reporting comes from, and Schoology is specifically for teachers, so it's a learning management system. Exactly.
Do we have Schoology accounts here? Could we see what it looks like sometime?
You could, a little more difficult maybe without a student here, but we sure could.
I may just come in sometime.
Yeah, yeah, that would be actually great, I'd like to show you what it does.
I'm not gonna get a kid.
You want me to drum mine up?
Do I say now, or...
Not now, you guys do.
We have kids.
I love it.
If you pass it, you see it almost every day.
Yeah, sometimes.
Is this a new cost to us, or is this just a renewal of a...
It's a renewal, and luckily, the cost has not gone up. It's based off of per student, so it's very easy to kind of manage what it's going to cost every year, so. I'll make a motion to approve the Schoology.
Katie on the motion.
I'll second.
Rob on the second. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Consideration to approve the fiscal year 18 proposed levy certification.
I went to Rochester, and Melcher was there, does a nice presentation on our levy certification. We are really excited again that it looks like we're gonna be lowering our levy to our taxpayers. Overall, our levy is down .93 percent from last year. The general fund is up due to long-term facility maintenance, safe schools, our debt service is due to the excess in reduction by the state. So my recommendation, and Josh's recommendation tonight, would be to certify to the max, that is what we've done every single year. It is, there's only eight schools in the entire state that don't certify to the max, and what that allows you to do is, if there's reductions that we can give to our stakeholders, we do that. And you as a board have always attempted to lower that for our community, so it would be my recommendation to set it at the levy to the max.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jerry made the motion to approve it to max.
To approve it to max.
That's true, good call. Jerry made a motion to certify to the max.
I'll second.
Rob on the second. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the first reading of the policy 6.5, animals in schools and classrooms.
Should I step out and call others really quick? Tim, would you feel, were you at the last meeting to do the animals one?
Uh, no.
Rob, you, Rob could very much lead this one, let me call others.
We're gonna let animals in this school. We've got, there's a new, actually MSBA doesn't even have a policy on animals, and they're service animals is what they're allowing in. So we've adopted any with Byron.
Byron?
Correct. Byron created one, and we've adopted it for Cannon Falls, one for MSBA, I guess one we'll probably look at that, but this is, at least it's something to have in the books. We do have a service dog starting this year, two. And the detail, it is pretty specific, which I do like, is it is specifically for dogs, so you can't bring in snakes or other types of animals, call them service animal. With IEPs, it helps as well, so that we ensure that we're not just letting someone bring their dog in because they're innocent. Take you. And there are two readings, just to do the first reading of it.
Do they have to have...
Training?
No, as an individual, do they have to have the disability, that portion, including physicals, sensory, psychiatric, intellectual, or other mental disabilities? Because the reason I ask is because it's not that hard to get a certified service dog.
And that's why we've got that in there. Right, and that's, we're talking about service animals.
Right.
As well, that's why it's very specific to the animal.
Yep.
To the type of animal, to the requirement. Plus, and this is part of what MSBA does and stuff, but it's gonna have to be a requirement that they have to have.
That's, I guess that's my question.
Am I correct, Lord?
Correct.
Yes. That was one of the parts that I was really questioning, so that just someone didn't say, "Well, I really, really love my dog, now I'm gonna come in every day."
And, right.
Right.
Because it costs $15 to get your dog certified.
Right.
And people are starting to bring their dog to work because they get that certification. Well, it's a service dog.
Right.
No, it's a pet that you wanna bring to work.
Right. And this is, like I said, this is the first swipe, MSBA doesn't have this policy yet, it's so new. Byron did a pretty good job. I looked for the loopholes on it with Beth and Lori to go, okay, how do we prevent any animal from coming in that could disrupt class, for whatever reason, and we thought this was pretty darn solid.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So, yeah. So, essentially has to be an IP, you didn't have a service dog.
Yes.
Or, you know, the final one would be, they have to come through superintendent. I mean, at the end of the day, even if there was a case that we weren't planning for, or maybe it was someone, "Hey, I don't need an IP, I have epilepsy, and I don't need that, and I really don't need a 504 plan," well, we could certainly work with them, but the final, you don't, you just don't get to do it. It would take.
Okay.
It would take some steps to do it.
And we have two service dogs in now, so we had to get something in place.
How do you handle possibilities of allergies, allergic reactions, that sort of thing?
We've talked extensively about that, we let, you know, all the teachers know. No parents have come forward yet. They may, you know, might have a severe allergy to dander, but never let our school know because we haven't had dogs in front of four. We would work extremely well, the parents of the current dogs are very cooperative, you know, if they needed to move their child out of a different room, they're okay with that. They wanna make sure that everyone's safe. Little harder when they get up to middle school and high school, you know, they intermix all the buildings and things like that. Those are kind of things we'll have to work with as they come forward. Usually unusual to have a dander allergy unless you touch it, so we're relying on that information to be accurate.
And the bigger concern almost is the opposite, is the direction of all the kids with one dog in school, with two dogs at school, and they're all just, "Oh, it's a puppy." You know, that's another concern from the other side, that is, how do the students handle having a dog in school?
Right.
Okay, first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt. Second?
A second motion.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. What'd you hear?
He's not answering his phone.
He's trying. Consideration to post and hire an assistant principal for 1718. This has changed.
Yes, it has. Surprise. You know, I really was confident that we could do this on a TOSA. And a TOSA is a teacher on special assignment, and I know when we worked with the admin team, we were all very excited at that possibility, and we thought, this'll be no problem. We went ahead and we interviewed anyone that was on staff currently, that could move from the classroom over into that position. As we interviewed, even the candidates thought, "I don't have enough training yet, I'm not ready for this position." Some of them aren't even done with their programs yet, they kind of wanted to get that done. I'm very glad that we interviewed the candidates that we did, it just wasn't the right match. It's a lot of administrative duty and a lot of increasing responsibilities. And so after we went through that process, we are realizing very quickly that we've lost one-fourth of our admin team. 25 percent, we're all feeling it. I took over safety, Jennifer is still doing some of her things with the DAC and things like that, we discussed that a little bit. Tim is kind of going crazy not having that extra support. We would very much like to go back to what we had. It has become very obvious to us that we need an assistant principal. I thought we could do it for the remainder of the year on the TOSA, I was wrong. I really believe that we need to do that administration piece. The problem with all of that is, if I pull someone else from a contract, and I can talk to that superintendent to see if they'll be released, oftentimes a teacher can be released, they still need time to fill their position. So we would like to move on this quite quickly, and I hope that we can bring a name to you next time. But there's a lot of steps that go into this. We are holding off on Bomber Academy for the fall, because we don't have anyone to organize that, so we won't run a fall session, but that's okay, I think that'll be all right. You know, of course, it's my hope that you approve this, this is no different than what we had. We've tried going without, and to be honest, the three of us, Jake has picked up slack, Dave is helping, everyone's helping, it's just to have those licensed principals on staff is important.
The way I read it, I could be reading it wrong, is it's just for one year?
It is. Hopefully, we find a candidate that is just like amazing, and we can renew that contract, that still comes back to you, if we wanna do that. The idea is maybe giving someone a chance, someone that maybe hasn't been a principal, but has that administrative license, or maybe had some experience, if we could move forward, then, you know, it might be a good opportunity for them. If it doesn't work out, it's not a great match, no harm done, they got a little bit of experience, and we move forward. But posting a position in May or April, you may get different candidates, so.
Where do you feel like we're gonna get a candidate pool into the next school year that's quality, qualified, I'm not sure what the right term is, but here we are in the next school year, what are we gonna find?
I know for a fact that you'll get extremely good candidates, because we had this open. Remember, this position was already open, and we've left it open, even while we were doing the TOSA position. So there are a lot of really qualified candidates out there. I feel very comfortable.
Are there potentially candidates that maybe got cut from their own districts that are looking for...
Possibly.
So we're looking at one year with administration tries to continue with the assistant principal period, or with a new person, but we're looking to keep the position in the future.
We are looking at keeping everything the way it was before. I think we made a good try going September and October, going into October, without has proven to be quite crazy. There's so many state things, the Minnesota Course Catalog, who's running 504 plans right now, you know, who's doing targeted services, who's our district assessment coordinator, who's leading the safety committee, who's leading the curriculum committee? I mean, there are so many questions up in the air right now. Can you grab them? That's great. So it has just become really obvious, I don't know who we give those duties to.
Could the principals weigh in just a little bit on this? This was in your basket to start the new year, and there was a mild sense of confidence it could get done.
Yeah, I don't know if crazy is the right way to describe what I'm going right now. It's been a challenge. I'm trying to get my first round of teacher observations done, and that's always a challenge. The last three years, having an assistant principal was a challenge, just because it seems like every time I put a teacher observation on my calendar, something comes up that drags me out, and I can't get that done. I tried to get four of them done last week, and I got that many done last week, because of just things that came up that, you know, needed my immediate attention. So, for me, that's probably the biggest thing, is, you know, in the first week, is three weeks of school, I've got new staff, and I've got non-tenured staff, and it's been a challenge to get into those classrooms and observe those teachers and to see what's going on there. And that assistant principal just allows me a little bit of time to be able to do that, and flexibility to do that, and that's probably the biggest thing for me.
Jen, you were in that chair last year.
Yeah.
Two.
I am doing a lot of the DAC stuff right now, and there are things that need to be taken care of. We aren't doing the targeted services, and that took a ton off on my plate, but managing a building on my own with that is, and I'm into my first round of evaluations as well, so it's going to get quite tricky, so the sooner we get someone in to fill those shoes, the better. But they don't like my word crazy. Crazy.
How do our candidates get to this position?
Well, actually, this would be a decrease, a small decrease in this case, we've gone this time now without one. Jennifer moved over to her contract, and started at a lower amount. Derek had been here for five years, so there's that savings. This assistant principal would also move down and start over on the scale, so again, there's some savings there. You know, just not having someone for a month has some savings as well. I too was looking for the savings, that's why the TOSA came up, but it's just 1,200-plus students, you can't do it with two principals. I don't have the time to take on those duties either, so, you know, unless we want Dave Peterson to get his principal license quick, we're really stuck, we'll take him.
You gotta start right at the time.
Gotta start right at the time.
Oh, forget it.
How many applicants have we had?
Forty-seven? Is that right, forty-seven? Forty-four are licensed? Yep.
Really?
I'll make a motion to post and hire an assistant principal.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda, to post and hire an assistant principal for Any other discussion?
So with so many applicants, was it something I just weren't interested in doing that in between, or, you said forty-four were licensed?
It could be a wide range of things. Keep in mind that this is from the agenda from last month, we didn't have a board meeting, so we just kept it posted, we've left it posted this whole time, because we were gonna start with the assistant principal, and then went to TOSA, now we're back to that. So, yeah, there could be multiple reasons. Sometimes people are in the classroom and just really wanna change, some people are looking for that opportunity. I think we're pleasantly surprised by the number of candidates and the quality of candidates, so I think we'll be okay. And I will keep you posted on how things roll out.
Okay, discussion is closed. All in favor of post and hire assistant principal for 1718, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Consideration to approve Madeline Sondheim as a special ed teacher for 1718.
Well, it's the cart or the horse, we're not sure which to do here. We have applied for Madeline Sondheim, she's currently a student teacher, let me see if I can walk this stuff through it. She is currently a student teacher for the district from Winona State. Winona State has given her the leeway to go ahead and be hired by the district. This is becoming more and more common with people. You have to hire them as a community expert. So I filled out all the paperwork with the state, I've been calling the state saying, "Hey, when's my variance, when's my license gonna come through on this candidate?" Because she's got her schooling done, but she doesn't have the degree. So that's, again, you've heard a lot about the tiered systems and things like that. This is the community expert. We reached out to the EA, they're okay with it, they have to sign the paperwork that goes to the state, I have to sign it. It's in, we're waiting for the state to reply. So even though it's on here tonight, saying consideration to approve, I technically can't start paying her as a teacher until I've got the okay from the state. I left a message with the MDE last Friday, her response was, "I'm getting to it, I have 134 applicants ahead of you." I don't know what that means, do you get through 50 a day, do you get through 20 a day? I think they're inundated with the teaching shortage right now, everyone is getting creative. Her contract is in here, ready to go when they approve it. I would suggest you approving it, so that we can start her ASAP with a case management load. We did interview three candidates, one candidate just wasn't ready, one candidate had worked here prior, and it wasn't a good match. Madeline knocked our socks off. To be so inexperienced, yet bring such a wealth of knowledge to the table was really impressive, probably one of the best interviews I've seen in a really long time. So my suggestion is to move forward, I just want you to be aware that there are a lot of little steps that are still occurring, and again, I can keep you posted on that. We can also table this, and certainly wait until she has the license from MDE. I don't know when that's going to occur.
So when you say she's done her academics, has she done any student teaching at all?
A very small stint, she's doing developmental disabilities now, and she would have been, and Winona State has, on her caseload, she has to have specific students on that caseload. All the parents have been notified that she would be their new case manager, and they're all okay with that.
So do we, because someone's coming in like that, and probably do a great job, but how do you measure someone's performance that way when they haven't done a lot of student teaching? How do we know that they're doing well?
Well, you still, she would be on the contract, so she gets evaluated by the principals, I mean, she'll have those three evaluations throughout the year.
So it's just like any new...
It's any new teacher.
Okay.
And then when she does graduate, you know, our hope is that she loves Cannon Falls, she's from here originally, kind of a funny story how she went away and then came back, and she's excited to be in the community and really active already. This is very common in paraprofessionals, they decide to go back to school to be a teacher, but already have some pre-experience. This is that program the state's been pushing, you know, how can we get teachers out into the workforce, and how can we take paras and move them into teaching roles?
I know there's really a shortage of special ed teachers too.
Very, yeah, much.
So we get to be...
So begin to groom somebody.
And I have confidence in Jen and Tim to evaluate her and guide her. Sharon has completely, you know, given her a mentor and working with her. Every piece of paperwork that goes home will be first seen by Sharon. There'll be nothing that goes out without Sharon's approval. So if we approve this tonight, then if between now and our next meeting, if it came through, you could get her started. That's correct. That is correct. If I got an email tomorrow that said, here's her variance and here's her community expert license, well, then we can just go ahead and move. I don't know which to do first, you know? We need to get her on our caseload numbers have just even risen since the last time I talked to you.
What if it doesn't get approved? If it is an approval process, we're looking at.
That's a good point. I thought about that. If it wasn't, it doesn't matter what action you take here. She's now a licensed teacher. She can't, we can't have her on that. So we'll go back to the interview process and start that all over again. That's a great question, because I thought about that too. What if it was denied?
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, say, two months down the road, it's denied, and all the cases that she's had with.
She can't have a caseload until it's approved.
So what is she doing?
Right now, she's student teaching.
Okay, so she's a student teacher here.
She's helping a lot, but she is not a case manager of anyone. She can't be. So our special ed teachers are in overload right now, knowing that this is coming. But no, she is not allowed to have her own caseload. It's a protection system that's made put in by the state to.
Will this be backdated then to when she does start? No, once she gets her first case, that's when she'll start as a.
Right, can't pay her as a teacher until she is under the teachers. And again, the EA has been extremely involved in this process too. They have to sign off on it.
She's getting good experience now.
She's getting some great experience.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Katie, to approve Madeline Sondheim as a special ed teacher for seventeen eighteen, subject to the procedure. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Then we'll hop back to scheduled presenters. We have one. Been a busy night, huh?
Hi, it's very nice of you here. Sorry, I came in a little late. I'm a not familiar face, well, to some of you. I probably served cookies to some of you at the MSBA convention. I'm Greg Crowe. By way of introduction, I'm the principal of the elders education group. So I am Shelby and Jeff and Joel's boss. So the first thing I'm going to do.
You can sit up at the table there, so you have a table.
Is give them the business for telling me the meeting was at six-thirty, not at six, so.
Oh, we were early that time.
Yeah, so I was early. Luckily, they didn't say, hey, it's early Halloween there. They all dress up, because I probably did that too. Yeah, so I know you all have obviously done bond issues recently, so I'm not going to go line by line through the report, but we want you to see the report, kind of due diligence for every bond issue, and then you have a resolution calling for the sale of the bonds and covenanting to participate in the state credit enhancement program, which, as you know, is the pre-program where the state says they'll pay for your bonds if you miss a payment. It gives you the state's double A rating when we go to sell the bonds and their interest rate. And of course, they come back and get the money from you through default, so don't think of that as a good side option. So let's just take a quick glance at the report. Six and a half million dollar refunding bond. The savings and the description of the outstanding debt and the new debt are in the purposes section on page one. So that's kind of the meat and potatoes of it. It's pretty similar to the refunding you did previously. The bonds that are being refunded are the 2008 A bonds. This is what's called a current refunding. So if you remember the last time, there was a lot of convoluted discussion about the escrow call, the advance refunding, the call date. This one's a current refunding, so it's callable now. You'll get the money and you'll pay off the old bonds when a new bond proceeds come in. The old bonds have a rate of between three and a half and four percent. We're estimating the new refunding bonds will have a rate of about three percent. That reduction in the interest rate, as well as we expect a premium debt, and you probably talked about that with the last bond, someone pays you more for the bonds than they're worth, and you use some of that money to pay off the old debt, so you actually reduce your outstanding indebtedness, as well as getting interest rate savings. So a combination of all of that, we estimate about $600,000 of savings in fiscal nineteen through twenty-eight, and a reduction in taxes of about $60,000 a year, starting with the taxes that, I'm assuming you're doing a preliminary certification tonight, so your final certification in December will have a reduction.
You're already certified to the max.
Okay, yep. So in December, when you do your final levy, we will have provided MDE with the savings from this refunding, and it will reduce the debt service levy for what your preliminary estimates were tonight by about $60,000. So we always note the net present value benefit of the refunding. There are some state milestones that are related more to the advance refunding, like the one you did this spring. But we note that it's about a little over $500,000 in savings, which is about seven percent of the outstanding debt service. And the minimum on an advance refunding is three percent. We like to see at least five to six percent when districts go ahead with refundings. This is above that, and it's a current refunding. So this is your only opportunity to get it and make sure that you're reducing taxes for, and not paying extra interest for the outstanding debt. So timing is right, great savings, and callable now. The other note in determined call feature, I always like to point out that two pieces. One, the structure of the bonds stays the same. There's about ten years left on them, and that will stay the same with the refunding bonds. You pay them off at the same time as the old bonds, so you're not extending the term or shortening the term. And because of that ten years, these bonds are being offered without the option to refinance them again. If you have a call date that's less than ten years, and say you said, well, we want to call these in five years, so maybe we can do this again, yet you're paying an interest premium typically with a short call date upfront. So if you don't have a call, you don't have the opportunity to refinance again, but you're getting some benefit when you sell them this time, getting a potentially better interest rate and not paying no call premium. So these will be offered without the opportunity to refinance. That's pretty difficult with a bond of about ten years, so. The other unique piece of this is in bank qualification, and I know you've had this discussion about the $10 million limit and the fact that while you are issuing more than $10 million in debt during the calendar year, there are special circumstances where you can deem a bond bank qualified. Bank qualification is triggered if you issue more than $10 million. You can't do bank qualification. Bank qualification gives you better interest rates typically because there's more bidders and there's a tax advantage to bidders because of bank qualification. Even though you're exceeding the $10 million limit, the original bonds that are being refunded were bank qualified. Paramod is less than $10 million. There's a few other triggers that basically allow you to deem these bank qualified. So we're doing that for the purpose of giving you an interest rate advantage on a way to go to sell the bonds next month. Okay? A lot of this is boilerplate that I'm sure you've seen before. There's a mention of the credit enhancement, which I talked about already, a mention of your outstanding A1 rating, which is a nice rating, a method of sale, notation about the solicitation of competitive bids that we do. There's basically an eBay for bonds, and we'll take bids on the day of sale, and at the last minute, bids will start popping up, and we'll bring the best bid of the day of the sale to your board meeting that night. We talked about the premium pricing, your existing debt. You're already obligated to do continuing disclosure. And really, this is all stuff that you've probably seen before and discussed. There is a timeline on page five. If you want to clarify that. So tonight, we're looking at the pre-sale report, the official statement, which is that perspectives that you've seen before, the week of October ninth, which will also be the rating call, which hopefully will be fairly painless since you've been recently rated.
I was going to say.
Maybe it'll be shorter than.
I hope so. I hope so. That's an interesting meeting.
Yeah, I always kind of say it's like a dentist appointment, though.
That's exactly.
You really don't, you don't look forward to it, but once it's over, it's like, okay, it wasn't that bad. So, and then October 23rd, we'll take the bids and bring the low bid to the board meeting that night. You'll receive the money on November 15 and pay off the old bonds on February 1st. There are some schedules attached. Kind of hit the high points. Page six has your cost of issuance as well as your receipts detailed, and obviously, you've done this before, so you know the cost of issuance come out of the bonds of closing. The savings that are cited are all net of the cost of issuance, so after you paid for the cost of issuance. Page seven is your old debt. See the average coupon there? Right under yield statistics that they're laid down, that's sort of the average of the three and a half to four percent you're paying now. So about 3.85 or 3.9 percent is sort of the average interest rate you're paying now. And that's comparable then on the next page to the true interest cost. Oh, and I said three, and I apologize. On page eight, the coupons are three percent, but with the premium, we factor in the impact of the premium. And so if you look at the true interest cost under yield statistics, it's 2.1 percent, so significantly lower than the coupon rate. So you're going from an average coupon of about 3.9 percent to an estimated true interest cost of 2.1 percent. So almost cutting the interest impact in half for your taxpayers. And a reminder, which you know, that this is just tax relief. It doesn't give you additional funds to spend on projects, but it does reduce your taxes for your taxpayers. So then the last page details the savings from going from 3.9 to 2.1 percent on the interest rate and premium, and again, the $600,000 and so on.
Greg, one of the questions, I know the answer to, because I asked it, but I think it would be important for the board to see it. Why wouldn't we wait? I mean, when you first, when we talked to Jeff and Shelby the first time, the savings looked to be around 454,000. We're up to $606,000, that's $60,000 a year for the next 10 years. I want what's best for our taxpayers. I'm really proud. We were talking about it earlier, that we continue to lower the tax impact to our community. Why not wait?
Right. So if you look at the very back page, for example, the first payment with reduced tax or with reduced principal and interest is February 1st of 2019. That's the levy that you're setting for 2018. So if you wait, you won't be able to reduce taxes until pay 2019, and you'd miss a payment. So you'd actually have one payment that was callable, that you could have refinanced, that you didn't lower, that you didn't go out and refund. So once you hit the point we're at now, the savings will start going down because fewer and fewer of the payments will be, you'll be able to refinance fewer and fewer of the payments. And so if you wait, you're losing opportunities then.
I thought that was important for you to hear, and also, interest rates are taking a turn, you know, and maybe not going to stay where they're at. So I, again, I agree with Greg and his group. This is just a great opportunity for our community.
Yeah, and if I had a crystal ball and I knew our rates were going up, I'd be on a beach somewhere probably. Not the Caribbean, but somewhere. But we do, you know, all the talk is with the Fed, that, you know, everything is talking about rates going up, and we're still at relatively low rates compared to the historic averages, so it's a prime time.
I've talked to a lot of my superintendent friends, and not everyone's got this perfect storm going on, you know, the callable dates and the years. We really are fortunate. The timing of this is really just unbelievable, because we've had bad luck before, and this is just an opportunity. It's not in every school right now. Not everyone can do this.
Yes, for sure. So if you have questions about the report or the resolution that's in front of you, again, that's fairly straightforward and fairly short. I'm happy to answer them.
Anything for the cause?
Let's go back to that number one.
Good news. Okay. Into action items, new bids. Consideration to approve the resolution providing the sale of general obligations. Is that something she did?
She did. I don't know where, where's the resolution?
It's in there. It's one in there.
Want to steal your thunder? Tell you what, this part.
Okay, we need a motion and a second. Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Jerry. Okay.
Okay, we'll take a roll call on the resolution providing for the sale of general obligations, school building refunding bonds, series 2017B, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota statutes, sections 126C, 55, guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds. Ms. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. That has to be a six-year vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Since it is October 23rd, maybe I should tell Jeff it's early Halloween. Is there a historic figure or something?
I think you should get back to him at some point, yeah. I'm along with the program if you'd like.
It's a five o'clock meeting. It's a five o'clock meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
I bet she thoroughly enjoys those meetings, huh? Good news. Okay. Next up, informational items. Next board meeting is on the ninth at 6:00 PM. Annual assurance of compliance, winter head coaches, and anything brought forth by the board pertinent to our jobs here.[1758.46]